Okay, the hour is five o'clock. The date is November 6th, 2025. I'd like to call a planning board meeting to order in a hybrid setting this evening. I'd like to introduce my planning board members and staff to my far right. Steve Yost, Sean Henry, Beverly Bookin, Vice Chair Jane Ramsen. I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. To my immediate left, Eric is our planner. And all the way to the left is Mr. Cook, Doug Cook. At the discretion of the chair and the vice -- oh, yeah. And David Rosen is online this evening with us. Thank you. The discretion of the chair and the vice chair. I'd like to take our agenda slightly out of order. I'd like to move down to the public hearing. So in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law 48 in Section 5, the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.11, the Gloucester Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider following proposed zoning amendment, amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.11, inclusionary housing requirements by lowering the threshold of applicability from developments resulting in six or more dwelling units to developments resulting in four or more dwelling units and adding the definitions, application of residential or mixed-use development and proposed development site to improve operation of the ordinance and to eliminate the potential for segmentation to avoid its requirements and notifying the fee-in-lieu schedule to create a fairer proportional system. So I'll open the continued public hearing. Those are the amendments that have been discussed. And if there's anybody in the audience this evening that would like to speak to those, this has been a posted regular agenda item. We will take further public comment, but we also have probably a little bit of discussion from members at this point. So why don't we open it up to public comment on the inclusionary requirements and the aforementioned amendments? It's all for yours.
Chris McCarthy, 166 Bray Street in Gloucester. Just a few comments on the changes. I mentioned at the last planning board meeting that I'm happy that the planning board is looking at a sliding scale for the inclusionary housing units in lieu of payments from which now is from nine down to four, which is advertised. I think having a sliding scale is good. My only thoughts are that I think that I wouldn't go all the way down to four units. I would hope that you'd stay at five units to nine units. And I think to try to make it simple for most people to understand quickly would be to make it a dollar amount per unit, as I described at the last meeting, whether from, call it five units to nine units. From five, adding a sum of money, whether it be $75,000 or $80,000 a unit. And each unit from five to nine would add another 75 or 80, whatever number is chosen. I think it'd make it simple versus the formula that's proposed, which looks very difficult for most laypeople and even builders like myself. I'm just glad that they're doing it in a sliding scale because I think it'll encourage more builders, developers, and, you know, to look at it a lot closer. One of the, one of the, in, I believe you have it in the definitions. It says add proposed development site in the definition for that. I think it, I like, I'd prefer, and I understand what you're trying to accomplish there by not having people go out, such as a project over in East Gloucester and segmenting property to avoid, avoid the number of units. And I said, I think it should just be one more continuous parcels of, one or more continuous parcels of land. I think when you, when you start including as a development site, something that can be across the street from a public road as part of a contiguous site, you're not really segmented. It's segmented by the public way. If it's a regular right-of-way, I think it's segmented by a regular right-of-way. If it's an easement right-of-way, you could create an easement right-of-way without coming to the planning board, and you could put a right-of-way between two properties and separate them. I don't think you should have the definition of proposed development sites including properties that are across the street from a development parcel. I just think it's, again, you want to encourage people to take a risk, builders, homeowners, and you don't want to, you know, discourage them from, you know, building more housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Let's see if we've got anybody online. Yeah, Sonny, come on up. Yeah, thank you.
Sunny Robinson, 20 Harvard Street. I'm really glad of the opportunity to share a few thoughts on the proposed changes in the inclusionary zoning. I don't feel like I'm as well-informed on the background discussion that got you all to this point in time. And I was actually hoping tonight, in addition to sharing a few comments, to hear more discussion about a few things. In general, I'm very supportive of what you're trying to do. I think it's wonderful to try to move the starting point to four units from six. And I also think it's really a very good idea to have the tiered payment in lieu of schedule that you're putting there. A piece of what I was hoping to hear a bit more about, or two or three things. What information do we have from other communities about how they've made this work when they went to the four units? I also wonder what discussion you perhaps have had with the Affordable Housing Trust in terms of how to make this really visible, attractive, incentivize people trying to move on those couple of things. And I wonder if you have any, as a third item, have any cost-related material in terms of what it would mean for a developer if they were going, doing four units and if they were trying to do it at 60% or 80%? So maybe I have missed some of that discussion and have to double back to your past meetings on the website, which I will do. But I appreciate the opportunity both to express my support in general, my appreciation for trying to move us towards more genuinely affordable units in the city and then a fee structure that would be achievable by developers as they move us forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sunny.
Hi, Patty Anpage, 173 Conquest Street in Gloucester. I would like to address only the reduction of numbers of affordable units from six to four. We've watched this progression from, I think it was nine. Developers come in and build eight. We go to six, they build five. Reducing it to four, I did watch some of the background discussions. I didn't really see, as maybe Sunny alluded to, any economic analysis on this. And I'm only looking at, not as a housing perspective per se, but as a business perspective. I can assure you that a lobster company can't give away every fourth lobster. A donut company can't give away, sell a dozen donuts at a price of nine. This fourth unit sounds to be, I think, a little too economically onerous. And I do think you're going to disincentivize developers at that number. I don't know if it is even sound planning to come at four. So I'm going to try to work through the process. This is the public hearing, and I hope that there's discussion on that. And maybe six is your good number. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and congratulations, by the way. Any other comments? One attendee online. So I guess hearing none. There's been an enormous amount of work that's been done on this at the board level and the subcommittee level. So I think what I'd like to do is close the public comment period, and we can at least take a stab at some of the comments that were made this evening. Jane was headed up our subcommittee on this particular inclusionary language body of work. So I will turn it over to my vice chair. Okay, the public comment period.
Yeah, right? We have to vote for that? Yep, so I make a motion that we close the public comment period for this public hearing.
Don't move.
We have a motion by Beverly Bookin. I need a second, please.
No, I made the motion and Beverly seconded it.
So we had a motion by Jane Ramsen, and it's seconded by Beverly Bookin. I just need a roll call vote because David is remote.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Thank you.
So taking some of the comments, and forgive me if I miss any. I did write them down. I did take your point, Chris, that you wanted, I think I heard you say you wish it was a five-unit minimum, not four, and you wanted a per-unit fee instead of pegging it to the three-year average. And I've given it some thought over the week. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but it was a very deliberate discussion to lower the threshold to four units. I'm perfectly good with that. And to change the number to an actual dollar amount wouldn't reflect the cost of housing as it rises. And so the reason we stayed away from that is so that we didn't have to reevaluate the cost of housing every year in this bylaw. It gives some flexibility. You know, the median house price in Gloucester, whatever it is right now, is, you know, it can be, we can do better by publishing that number on the website or whatever. But it seems to me that it's very fair to say 10%, you know, for example, for four units as a fee-in-lieu, for a four-unit development, you know. I don't know what the median house price is right now, but let's just pretend it's $5,000. So that would be $50,000. So that doesn't seem like super hard math, hopefully. So I'm good with leaving it that. And then Sunny's comments were, what information did we get from other communities? You know, interestingly, we are ahead of many other communities in this ordinance. So it's kind of a Greg question because I personally didn't look at a lot of other communities, but I do know that we are, just like with the ADU, like we've done well with this right before the state has even come and made their laws about it. What, I can't read my hand scratches. Oh, what discussions did we have with the Affordable Housing Trust? Again, that's a Greg question, I'm afraid, and he's not here today. But I do believe, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, he had a couple of discussions with the Affordable Housing Trust and gave that feedback to us. Who Greg is? Yes, I'm sorry, Greg Catimatore, our planning director. And do we have cost-related materials? I think you might be referring to the fee-in-lieu. Is that right, Sunny? I don't know. I can't get you back up here to speak because we closed the public comment period. But we considered very carefully the median house price while we created this, and we tried very hard to make these fees reasonable for the amount of units being built. And then Patty, I do take your point that you would rather see a minimum level of six rather than four. Just to be clear, we are not suggesting that if you create four units, like if you have four lobsters, you have to give away one lobster. We're saying if you have four units or four lobsters, you have to pay a fee that's 10% of the median house price. So it would be paying a fee that would be equal to 10% of one of your lobsters, I suppose, to put it, you know, to really beat that metaphor to death. Great. So the way this is written is we're only requiring an affordable unit if you have nine units or above, well, actually 10 units or above. If you have nine units, you have the choice of paying 100% of the median sale price or an affordable unit. Do my colleagues have any more comments about that?
I was just going to add that to the question about, did we look at the economics of it? We did actually, we didn't go through each of the layers and break it down, but we did do an economic feasibility study while we were going through the 3A process that showed that we could require an affordability component at three units, and it would still be a profitable enterprise to build a three-unit dwelling with, despite having an affordability requirement.
Thank you.
I think the comment about a contiguous site is appropriate. I don't think, first of all, if you have a public right-of-way between a piece of property, wouldn't the property across the street be in a separate tax lot? But it seems to me contiguous properties that was suggested by Chris is a reasonable compromise.
I wonder if that was meant to include a street that was built as part of the property?
Yes, it was. So just for the people in the audience, what this says is we're proposing to add a couple of sentences here, a definition of the proposed development site, which is one or more contiguous parcels of land, including parcels directly across one another, fronting on a public or private way that are under common ownership or common control, among which any residential construction or development activity is proposed and ongoing. And so, yes, we are basically saying, you know, sometimes common driveways get turned into roads. Sometimes roads are small, private roads, but they're still owned on both sides by the same person doing one development. So that's what we're trying to get at.
Then I think that clarifies it.
Any other questions, comments?
Just going to say that, as Jane said, there was a lot of discussion about what number to tag and bring it down. And I think the compromise position that we reached was that we had that sliding scale that where, so in a four-unit project, you're only paying 10% of the mean income of, or mean sale price of a home. And 10%, I think currently, I think we're at like $730,000, right? $730,000?
Right, it's $550,000. And then, so 10% is $55,000.
So that's roughly to all five per dwelling unit, which isn't a substantial cost spread out over the entire project, I don't think.
So that's a substantial improvement from the fee-in-lieu table that we had previously. It's much cheaper for the smaller units, smaller unit developments. I also want to point out that we received two emails that have been entered into the public record from Larry Oaks and Deanna Fay that were in support of this ordinance. Deanna did have some recommendations to further strengthen the ordinance, but I think we're going to probably, if the board agrees, I think we're probably going to move on tonight. But luckily for all of you, there will be a couple more public hearings at the city council level, and the P and D meetings are always public. And I don't know whether they have public hearings or public comment allowed, but you are welcome to attend those as this ordinance makes its way through the process.
Motion to?
Okay. Bear with me. I move that the planning board recommend forwarding this amendment of the Gloucesters, forwarding to the city council this amendment of the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.11, inclusionary housing requirements by lowering the threshold of applicability from developments resulting in six or more dwelling units to developments resulting in four or more dwelling units, adding definitions for, quote, "application for residential or mixed-use development," unquote, and, quote, "proposed development site," unquote, to improve the operation of the ordinance and eliminate the potential for segmentation to avoid its requirements and modifying the fee-in-lieu schedule to create a fairer proportional system.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen. I need a second.
Second.
We have a second by Steve Yost. Just need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for all that work, guys. So we were going to get back on track on our agenda for this evening. We're going to move back up to A and Rs. And so the first is an A and R submitted by Daniel Fonzie to divide 35 Massa Soiet Assessors Map 231 and Lot 17. The planning board did have a site visit earlier this week, and I think one or two members, I don't know if Doug, you got a chance to go up? Okay, fantastic. And we do have the applicant's engineer here this evening. So I'm going to start your presentation.
Attorney, not engineer. Aidan Church, CSI Legal Solutions, 3 Main Street, Gloucester. As the chair mentioned, the board was out for a site visit last week and/or earlier this week just to review access from Massa Soiet and Canonicalus Road. Obviously, for the new split lot closer to the river there, the access would be on the lower end towards the Canonicalus roadside. So we believe that these lots are entitled to an A and R endorsement from the board because they both front on a portion of Massa Soiet Road that has been previously endorsed by this board through the A and R process back in 2014. And those plans were attached to the application. So happy to answer any further questions, but we believe we're entitled to endorsement and hope that the board will endorse the plan.
Thank you. So I guess I'll start off. I think the thing that I was hoping to see on the site visit was a little bit more definition from staking and a little bit better access to the buildable portion of that lot. It was sort of difficult to get around. And I only saw one sort of, you know, stake that was kind of on the pavement or the dirt. So I was hoping for a little bit better definition to get a real sense of, you know, access to the buildable part of that lot was my feeling. So I don't know what other folks had to say about that. I mean.
Who, can I just have a show of hands for who went on the site visit? Because I was only there with Rick. So Doug, you went. You did not go. You didn't go. And you didn't go. And David, did you go?
I have not been able to see it yet.
Okay. So I feel like since over half the planning board has actually not been to the site yet, that we probably ought to schedule another site visit. And having the driveway more clearly delineated would definitely help figure out the situation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think also that this is one of these cases we keep kind of running into these sites that are, really seem very difficult. And it would be helpful to have some kind of schematic of how the site would be developed. Does that make any sense to you guys? Because it really, you know, you're kind of blind. I mean, you can look at the plan and see the, roughly, somebody's saying there's a 25% slope here, 25% slope there. But how would a building be situated on the lot? How would a driveway work? How would the road be improved? That kind of thing, I think, would be really helpful.
Thank you, Doug. So I guess that sort of follows up on my, you know, input that it would have been nice to see a little bit more, you know, I don't know if schematic is the right word, but, you know, this is, again, it's a difficult site to sort of view from the, you know, the entry point into where, you know, a proposed building would go. And I think the feeling, at least, you know, if we can get the other board members out here and out to the site, and if we have, you know, if somebody could make it a little easier to access the site so we can walk to see where a buildable portion of it is. I mean, I think what we're really trying to get to is, you know, supporting the idea, but making sure that we're making it, supporting the idea for the right reasons.
Sure. So I'm happy to continue at this stage, and we can provide some further clarification. But I, you know, as Joel, I think Attorney Favazza alluded last time when he was here, that obviously we will, in the event that we have to improve the road for access purposes, we'll be back in front of this board at that stage. And at this A and R stage where this board has previously endorsed this road and we do front on this road, I would say that, you know, in our opinion, we are entitled to this A and R endorsement. If the board feels strongly that they all, you want to come back out and see this further, I'm happy to oblige, but that's just, you know, what I will have to say about that.
Okay, well, I think, you know, to Jane's point, I'd like to have the people that haven't been out to the site make an effort to get out there. And then we can, you know, make a fully vetted decision so there's not any confusion.
Yeah, the weird thing about this is that the road itself is so steeply sloped. So the people who have access off the road are in a less steeply sloped, you know, section of the road. So it's really important to see exactly where the lot access, like literally exactly where it would be from the steepness of the road.
Yep. And so I think it would benefit everybody if, like I said, if there's an ability to identify, you know, by stake or by flag, you know, a center line of the driveway access and, you know, and at least have some sort of path that we can get out to the build of a portion of it. And so I think that would go a long way to helping us sort of form that vision. I don't know that there's any concern that it's, you're not entitled to it, but we, it is a difficult site, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're making the right decision for you guys.
Understood. So I'll request to continue until the next meeting.
Yeah, so that's November 20th.
Just set a site visit time?
Well, that would be the next thing to do.
I just want clarification. Is it fair to say in the application, the reasoning given was on the point that it was a private way, not accepted by the city, however predates adoption of subdivision control law, has previously been accepted by the planning board by a class, by past A and R plans? Is it fair to say that that's not an issue for us? That we can at least give that assurance? Or do we not make a statement about that at this point?
We would need to answer that, you know, before we, you know, vote on the A and R, and we'd have to do a little bit more research on that as well. Because I don't have the recollection of the former A and Rs that we've, you know, approved off of that. So we'd have to do a little bit more research on that.
So the former, the A and R plans that were endorsed were attached to the application, including the creation of the existing lot itself.
If you, Steve, if you go out there, you'll see that those houses that have been built have access on a much less steep part of the road. So that's the issue.
All right, I understand that the issue is really the buildability aspect. And I just want to see if we could give a clarification that at least the letter of the law or what's argued for specifically here is not an issue so far. But I think you're saying we'll hold out on that as well with the idea of doing further research.
So before we continue to, or the motion to continue to the 20th, we need to establish a site visit for the folks that haven't been out there. a site visit for the folks that haven't been out there. And if it's something that you guys want to do independently and agree to do before the next one, we can do that. Or if we want to have the attorney join us, um, and hopefully identify some of the things we've talked about as far as further staking, that would be great.
Apologies for not going out. Uh, I was probably one of each of us who said, yeah, everyone else will probably be there. I'll be the only one that didn't go out.
Right, right. But I think this is an important one to get everybody on board, so.
I won't be here next week, but I'll, I'll make a point of going out tomorrow.
Okay. Beverly, you, John.
You won't see flagging if you did. I mean, it's unless they do it.
Uh, we won't be able to get that flags.
Yeah.
So what's your?
Can you go after you get back?
When are you back, Sean, I guess is the question.
You wish you knew the answer to that? Okay. Um, so what are we looking at as a calendar here?
Why don't we do something the beginning of the week of the 17th to give as much time as possible for flags and so on and so forth?
Monday or, or Tuesday afternoon, but we now with the darker, with daylight saving time gone, we need to do it more like three in the afternoon because it, or because it gets dark.
Monday at three. Okay.
I have to, I would have to do Monday at two. Can't do three.
Both can do two o'clock on Monday, Beverly and Steve?
I can as well.
And David?
Yes.
That was easy.
Just additionally, Aiden, could you, uh, send the request to continuance in writing, please?
Sure.
Get a motion to continue this A and R to the 20th of November.
I move that we continue the A and R plan for 35 Massasoit Road till November 20th.
We have a motion by Jane Remson.
Second.
A second. Second by Steve Yost. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Remson?
Yes.
Member, uh, Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.
All right. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Okay. Next on to the agenda this evening, it's an A and R plan submitted by cupboard of Gloucester LLC, Chair Mark Glofski Esquire, to divide property at 41 Oav Assessors Map 216 Lot 75. Your presentation.
Uh, good evening. Uh, when I was last before you, uh, obviously, uh, I ran through the application, uh, in detail, and tonight I only intend to respond to the issues that arose at the prior meeting. And my recollection was that the board was troubled by two, two possibilities, two issues. Uh, one is that the way that's now known as Georgia Way, uh, wasn't depicted on a recorded plan. And the second issue was that there was no evidence presented to the board with respect to the existence of the way now known as Georgia Way prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law in December of 1960. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, uh, I put a memo together that I've submitted to the planning board. Uh, attached to the memo are three aerial photographs that show the way now known as Georgia Way, uh, at three different times. Uh, one is, uh, 1938, the other is 1955 and 1969. Additionally, uh, I met with one of the more elderly residents in the neighborhood who's been on Tolman Avenue since 1961, and, uh, she provided an affidavit to me that I also submitted to the board. Uh, I think it's fairly clear from the statute and the, uh, and the Gloucesters subdivision rules and regulations that there are three recognized manners in which, uh, property can be divided without going through the subdivision process. And yes, there's a public way, there's a way shown on a plan previously recorded, uh, or approved, uh, but there's also, uh, in both the Gloucesters subdivision rules and the state statute, uh, an exception that says that, uh, lots that front on a way that was in existence, uh, that these lots that are being proposed both front on a way that was in existence. Uh, case law has concluded that the important thing is that the way existed on the ground prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law. And in this case, uh, this clear and convincing evidence that that way was there, even though the, uh, property owned by my client was one contiguous piece. There was a roadway that went through her property that connected Tolman Avenue and Howe Avenue. And, uh, the second part of that exception, both in the state statute and in Gloucesters rules and regulations, is that the, uh, way needs to be adequate to serve the lots in question. And in this case, the existing, uh, way, Georgia Way, is paved to a width of 20 to 25 feet and, uh, clearly provides adequate access to, to both of the proposed lots. Uh, so, uh, I have not heard back from the city solicitor as far as the content of my memo, and I suspect I may this evening. But, uh, as far as I'm concerned, uh, this plan is entitled to endorsement, uh, because it satisfies the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mark, Attorney Glofski. Thank you. We do have our city solicitor here this evening and there's, um, I guess the concern is that, I mean, there's, there's nothing in the, in the deeds, at least from my perspective, that, you know, so would support the photographic, uh, evidence that's been before us, but I don't know if that's enough. So I'd ask Suzanne Egan to join us this evening and, um, and give us a little bit more education.
Yes, thank you. Um, Suzanne Egan, General Counsel. Uh, I can address some of the issues. I think one thing that we should clarify, um, is the, the tat, or the requirements for an A and R. So it's actually, and, uh, Attorney Glofski did note that there are three methods. Um, and the statute says a public way or a way that's been approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law or a way in existence. So, um, when you look at a way in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law, typically what you would do is what is a way? Is that a way that others have rights to use to pass and repass? And we would look at the registry of deeds to see if that way was in existence, excuse me, on a recorded plan or described in a deed. And so because of that, we, we weren't provided with anything. I did do some research, um, at the registry of deeds to determine whether or not there was a way in existence prior to 1960 that's shown on any plan that's recorded, the registry of deeds, not necessarily that's been endorsed or approved by the planning board, but in a plan. And so I have provided the board in a packet with, um, the plans that was recorded in 1950 that comes off of Tolman Road. And then, um, in 1957 and 1958, that a right-of-way, 25-foot right-of-way comes off of Tolman Road and bears to the west towards Western Avenue. And that is shown on deeds that have been recorded at the registry of deeds prior to 1960. But there's nothing that I've found, and I don't believe that the applicant has provided to the board anything that shows that that right-of-way existed as shown on the A and R plan, which goes further down, um, from that, I think it's 167 feet from Tolman Ray all the way down to Howe Ave, as it's shown on the A and R plan provided to the board, um, for endorsement. Additionally, you can see from the recorded plan at the registry of deeds that I also provided in 1975, there shows the locus is shown, it's called 41 Howe Avenue Plan, and that does show that right-of-way, 25-foot right-of-way coming off of Tolman Ave over to Western Ave, um, but not going down and bypassing Howe Avenue. So that would be something that the board would consider to whether the way was in existence. And there are also a number of deeds, um, in that Tolman Avenue, 41 Howe Avenue way that I've provided to you, and that does describe the right-of-way as not going down and through the 41 Howe Avenue property as a, as a way in existence, as a right-of-way, um, but jogging. And so if the board's looking at it in terms of what evidence do we have, what legal evidence do we have that this way existed, there is nothing that I've found and nothing been provided to the board on the record that shows that any, um, any property owner, anyone else has rights to pass, um, over 41 Howe Ave to access, to access Stage 4 Park essentially because it's Howe Ave and 41 Howe Ave, there's a, there's a bit of, um, you know, there's some distance between the property line and Howe Ave before there is actually a road there. It's just all paved. It doesn't mean there's a laid out road there. Um, and so I would conclude, looking at the registry of deeds, and I think you can have that ability to look at those deeds and look at those plans, that there is nothing, there's no evidence of that way in existence, um, as a legally identifiable way that others would have rights to. And so that is one of the tests. And then your other test, I think, is Attorney Glofski reported or, um, informed the board as to whether or not there's adequate access, um, provided. And what the board does is it looks at the existing condition as it stands now. It doesn't go back to that photograph and say, is that adequate access? So I think those are two determinations that the board has to review and, um, consider. And the other issue that I think that you would want to consider is that this A and R creates, so there's this, um, the, the lots are in the R20 zoning district, 20,000 minimum area for the zoning. The lots, one lot is creating a 12,500, the other one is 20,000. I think the board is familiar with the doctrine of infectious invalidity, which is essentially that you can't create a buildable lot by making, rendering another lot unbuildable. So that would mean that both lots are unbuildable or out of conformance until they're brought into conformance with the zoning limits. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on this issue.
Thank you for that, Suzanne.
Go ahead.
So, uh, I, I agree, I hear that you're saying that, um, this is not necessarily a way in existence prior to the subdivision control law. Um, and that being said, so that would just mean that this is not an A and R, basically. It doesn't meet the criteria for an A and R. Is that correct?
If the board finds that there was no way in existence.
Right.
Prior to 1960, then that, that portion, right? You have three choices.
Right.
Find an A and R.
Right.
You don't have that way in existence.
Exactly. And, and if it's not an A and R, it doesn't mean it can't happen eventually. It just would have to happen under the subdivision control on a different process.
Right.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
Just to make sure I understand the second point, uh, this, this division in of a single lot into these two lots would create a new non-conforming lot.
Exactly. Right. And it's shown on the plan that it's a 12,500 square foot lot. It's a 20,000 minimum.
And, and a non-conforming building because the setback would be 13 feet.
Right.
Which, and then the other concern I have, as long as we're talking about non-conforming setbacks, is that the, um, lot line, the lot lines for the two A and R lots don't follow the road. So even though it says there's a 13-foot setback between what the proposed road would be, it seems like it's a, the actual road, you know, is in a different spot. So I don't even know how to address that.
Am I missing something here? How can you subdivide a site and not create two legal lots? I mean, what's the point? Two, two, excuse me, two legally sized lots? I mean, well, you...
You can't under the A and R process.
Well, you can do it under the subdivision. You can get trans.
So you can subdivide, you can do it, you can get an A and R for, because the, the planning board doesn't look at zoning compliance, and the test is whether there is fringes on the lot. So you can create one buildable lot and the other one can just be unbuildable. It's an unbuildable lot. Like, I think, I believe people, um, sometimes what people I've seen, the A and Rs are there may be two lots. You have, uh, one, one lot is shown as a buildable, then there may be, um, you know, an undersized lot on this side that's rendered unbuildable, or there's another A and R that goes at the same time and some, another lot that's abutting it, takes that on to make two conforming lots. But it's, you know, that's a more complicated process. You can do that. I've seen that before.
I don't know if it's worth going down this path, but, uh, when we say buildable, there is a building on the, on the lot. So how is, how, maybe we don't need to address this here as a conjecture, but...
That's a big point. If we, if we, if it's an, it's in my, if we, sorry. Um, we would, if this, if we approve this as an A and R, we would be creating a non-conforming lot, a non-conforming lot with a building on it, which is not the intent of A and R. A and R is supposed to be everything in compliance, the size of the lot, the building envelope, that whatever. And we have done other A and Rs for sure, and this planning board where one lot is too small to accommodate a building for that district, but it's always printed on the map that it will be a non-buildable lot unless there's further planning board approval. So I guess I feel that this does not meet the requirements for an A and R.
Uh, David?
Can the, the object of the division here be achieved if it came in through a definitive subdivision plan?
That's a question for me. Um, so if the, the purpose of the division would be to create two buildable lots, it would not because one lot would be undersized. So it would be 12,000. You, it's the same problem, whether it's a, in terms of zoning, whether it's an A and R or a subdivision, it's the same problem. You're creating one undersized lot and you can't, you know, the, the law, it's pretty clear in the law, you can't take one undersized lot. You can't create an unbuildable lot or a non-compliant lot to create a buildable lot and have both of them be, um, one has to be noted as unbuildable.
But you could get a variance presumably. I mean, you could try.
If a variance, you know, if you don't have to have a self-imposed hardship as a requirement for a variance.
Oh, yeah, true.
That would be a little hard to meet that requirement.
It would be one thing if the building was built on a non-conforming lot before it was rezoned to R20. It would be a non-conforming lot and it would be legal.
Right, a pre-existing.
But in this case, you're creating a non-conforming lot with the buildings who essentially, it's a, it's like a 30%, the lot is 30% smaller than the minimum requirement, which is, if, even if you went for a variance, is quite a large variance.
I guess Suzanne, in the, I mean, we've all created or been part of A and R processes that create non-buildable lots and they're indeed restricted and often conveyed out again. But I guess, is there any remedy? Um, I mean, I think when Attorney Glofski was before us, I think the, you know, this was identified early on that you can't, you know, create a non-conforming lot with a principal building on it, right? And if, and does it resolve as the remedy if we were to pursue the A and R, um, that you require the razzing of the building? Does that solve any of these problems that we have? I mean...
In terms of zoning? No. I mean, the zoning requirements, if it's a minimum lot area.
Yeah.
And the newly created lot.
Yeah.
Doesn't meet that lot area, whether it has a building on it or not, it's still non-compliant with zoning because it's a newly created lot. So if you, yeah.
I think questions have been asked at this point, right? Uh, Attorney Glofski, would you like to respond to any of the comments made? Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
I need to apologize to the planning board and the, um, attendees, but I have to leave. But you have a large quorum at your disposal, so I'm sure everybody will be fine. Thank you.
Uh, another point, a number of points were, uh, made by Attorney Egan, uh, and, uh, they're really outside of the parameters of, of what's required in this case. Uh, the law clearly says that all that's significant, all that's important is that the way existed physically on the ground in December 1960. Uh, there's no requirement that other, others have rights in it necessarily. Uh, however, I will respond to that by saying that there are many ways... However, I will respond to that by saying that there are many ways in which people can acquire rights in ways. There are express rights, there are implied rights, and there are rights by adverse possession or adverse use. It's clearly established, we've established that this way has been used by others for an extensive period of time. The, the rights that others have don't have to be recorded in a deed or referred to in a deed or on the record at the registry of deeds. All that's required is that the street existed. And the street did exist in the thirties. It existed at the time that the building was constructed. And consequently, the building was constructed on a small, smaller lot. It is grandfathered because it, it's been that lot with that frontage for an extensive, extended period of time. We're, we're not now creating this lot for the first time. What we're doing is clarifying the definition of the two lots that have existed for quite a while because of the existence of the way that's now known as Georgia Way. I think, based on my limited experience, that this plan clearly meets the requirements. If there's a zoning issue, it is ours to deal with. The planning board, by endorsement of the plan, as you heard moments ago, says nothing about the applica, the applicability of, of the conformity with the applicable zoning. So I think, uh, as far as I'm concerned, with all due respect, this is an approvable plan. If, if the sense of the board is that you want additional information from me, I can try to provide that to you. If you have made your minds up and the decision is going to be to deny the plan, then I would respectfully request the opportunity to withdraw the application without prejudice.
I, I appreciated that candor, Mr. Klosky. I think the, um, the, you know, we have two points, right? I mean, we have somebody that's saying, that's advising us that there's no recorded easement that, to establish what we would like to make the decision based on. If, if you think that there is more information that can be brought to this board to, you know, referring back to Attorney Egan's, you know, various, you know, very specific points. And this is, you know, we're talking about twenty-five feet, a hundred and sixty-seven feet. It may or may not have gone down the entire way. I mean, so if there's guidance that your research can provide this board to say, yes, in fact, in, in responding to Attorney Egan's points specifically, I would love to give you that time and opportunity. I, I don't know that we've necessarily made up our minds on this issue. I was out there today. It's clearly paved. It's twenty-five feet wide. I went up and down the street. I mean, you know, at first blush, uh, and, you know, just on a casual drive by, it doesn't seem to be a problem. But again, there's, it's a very complicated issue. And if there's more information to be provided, I would love to have that information before we made a decision. And so I'm happy to offer that time.
Well, I appreciate your effort and, uh, I don't, but I don't want to waste your time. Again, there is no requirement that there has to be a recorded easement or recorded rights. That's just nowhere in the statute, nowhere in the case law. I don't know where that's coming from. But, uh, I, I think I've given you what I can give you. And consequently, uh, my inclination, after I maybe hear your discussion, uh, would be to make a decision as to whether, uh, I try to provide you with more information to answer issues that are still on the table or whether I request leave to withdraw.
Well, I, I, I mean, I guess further discussion, right, from the board? I mean, obviously Attorney Egan's provided us with some guidance, um, very specific and very nuanced, in my opinion. It's, I mean, A and Rs in our world are, are a five-minute meeting, right? I mean, so you have the frontage, you have the minimum, you know, and we do these things all the time. And A and Rs go to multiple meetings with, you know, a lot of, you know, extra information to sort of get over what we think the requirements are. Then that's when we need to make sure they're doing it in the correct context, right? And so.
I, I'd just like to ask, what is your position on the fact that you're proposing to create a non-conforming lot?
Actually, you were right on target when you, uh, referred to the fact that it, it was an old building on a lot. And that's exactly what it was. That lot has been there, uh, since the thirties. And, and I don't know the date that the original covered building was constructed. I guess I could determine that, but it's, it's probably in the thirties. And at the time it was constructed, there was, there was a street that went from Howe to Tolman. And it was used for passage from people in the neighborhood. And, uh, I did provide an affidavit from a woman who was, is ninety-five years old and was the only person I could find who was familiar with the condition of the street in the early sixties. I, I don't know that I'm going to find anybody older than that that has better recall.
But are you saying then that if the road was established in nineteen thirty initially, that its boundary created the lot line for this non-conforming lot? So that it was, it was created before the zoning code adopted the R twenty?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, so that's his argument. Okay.
Didn't exist as part of the, the smaller lot, which is what, Lot Two, described in your A and R plan. It was one lot. The entire thing was, was one lot.
Yeah, it, it, exactly. It, it shows up on the assessor's map, obviously, as one lot. That was included in the application. And it's just been in common ownership, sort of similar to, uh, the other A and R or A and R, the discussion you had on the inclusionary zoning, where you had a, a lot across the street. It can't be included in the lot area calculation because it's, it's separated by a street. In this case, we're separate, we have two pieces of, of land in the same ownership, separated by a street, just like you alluded to in that discussion.
In general, it wasn't necessarily separated by the street when the building was initially created. And that, it, basically, you, you made the point that it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. But originally would be in a conforming lot. Whereas what you're asking us to do is to compound the pre-existing, non-conforming structure by actually creating a non-conforming lot just around the, the building.
My, my position is that it is a non-conforming lot not being created by this A and R plan.
But if it's, if it is an existing lot, you wouldn't have to come before us to ask for an A and R plan? If there was ever a, a deed that somehow separated.
It, it's all been included in one deed. And that's, that's the, the problem. If there were multiple deeds that described the, the lots being bounded by the way, that would be clear cut. But that, that's not, uh, a requirement in the statute or the subdivision rules and regulations. The only requirement is that it existed on the ground physically.
I can't argue that because I don't know the.
Pardon me?
I can't argue that, but the fact is it doesn't bear a separate tax lot number.
No, it doesn't.
Which would, then you would argue, when was that tax, that legal tax lot, um, registered? It's not the word I'm trying to think of. And if it was prior to the adoption of R twenty, that would be another matter. But it doesn't have a separate lot. It's not legally a separate lot. At least on a map, it doesn't look to be a separate lot.
There are lots of properties in, I, I, in Essex and Manchester that I'm aware of that were, uh, served by wood roads or dirt roads. And they were in common ownership. And my experience is that in those situations, because the road existed, even though the same owner owned property on both sides and the fee under the road, uh, it was still eligible for, uh, A and R division, just as we're proposing tonight. But I, I don't seem to be convincing anybody. And under those circumstances, I guess I'd respectfully request leave to withdraw. Let's see, I sort of sense the writing on the wall.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to see if Mr. Rosen had a comment before we took any further action.
No, no comment.
Cook? Bless you. So I guess the procedure would be to basically take a vote of the board to accept this A and R being withdrawn without prejudice. So if somebody could make that motion, that'd be fabulous.
Just so move, without reading all of the.
So, um.
So move that, uh, the applicant, uh, be able to withdraw the A and R without prejudice for the site at forty-one Howe Ave.
They have a motion by Beverly Bookin. I need a second, please.
Second?
Seconded by Sean Henry. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
For Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. So next, under, uh, A and Rs, uh, we have a request for an amendment of a cluster development plan filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on behalf of Upper Banjo Pond LLC to permit a twenty-five unit residential development at one sixty, one fifty-eight R and one fifty-four A Essex Ave, Assessor's Map two eighteen, lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-six. The applicant has requested this, uh, A and R, um, amendment to, uh, be continued to our regularly scheduled meeting of November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. So I need a motion to that effect, please. So move is fine.
So move.
We have a motion by Beverly Bookin. I need a second, please.
Second.
That was Mr. Yost. Um, we need a roll call vote.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Back to public hearings, um, all over the map this evening. So second on the agenda this evening was in accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law Forty A, section nine and eleven, and the zoning ordinance of the city of Gloucester, section one point five point five, one point eight point three, and five point ten, Gloucester Planning Board to consider a special permit application for a water shed protection overlay district filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on behalf of Upper Banjo Pond LLC to permit a twenty-five unit residential development at sixty, one sixty, one fifty-eight R and one fifty-four A Essex Ave, Assessor's Map two eighteen, lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-six. That's correct. Again, uh, by the request of the applicant to be continued to our regularly scheduled November twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
So move.
We have a motion by Beverly Bookin. Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Henry, a roll call vote, please.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. At the minutes. Okay, so this is August twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. Page one. So, uh, any questions, modifications, amplifications for the August meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion. To approve. We accept the minutes for the planning board meeting of August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion by, uh, Sean Henry, seconded by Mr. Yost. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
I was not present.
Oh, yes. Uh, Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Next is, uh, October sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Arm on this one. Modifications on ten sixteen twenty-five. Directions, hearing none. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the planning board meeting on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion by Sean Henry.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Yost. Roll call vote, please.
Member Rosen?
I'm staying. I was not there.
Right, yep. Uh, was it, there's a member, Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. Anything anybody else wants to talk about since we cleared the room?
Uh, yes, just a, an inquiry whether the board would be interested in doing an inspection of Bill Wheat's housing project behind the McDonald's that we approved. He has offered for us to come and take a look at it. I'm going to go see it. If anyone else would like to join, let me know.
Forty R?
Forty B.
Forty?
It's fifty R Maplewood. The forty B at fifty R Maplewood.
Thirty units or thirty-three units?
Thirty units.
Yeah.
Correct.
But I, I thought we didn't approve that. We didn't approve that.
Well, it came before the, was, was it a forty B project?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, but.
We looked at it, you know, we looked at it and took our comments about bicycle parking and, you know. So we did review it, but I think it was more of a.
It was a frontage issue. You didn't have frontage because the, the lane from Maplewood to Washington wasn't, you know, can't create.
But approving it itself was a forty B, so we had no.
Right. But we'd like to go see it anyways, David. You got an invite.
When would, is, is there a time set or you just want to know who's?
We'll, we'll make a, we'll suggest a time and see if that works for folks.
Okay.
Is there a gentleman just on the part of the board?
So.
Sorry.
I missed that.
So we'll probably just take this offline. It's not an action of the board.
Exactly.
Just be a casual drive by. So, but thank you for that, David. Thank you. And no fries, Steve, no fries. It's, unless it's less than fifty dollars worth of fries.
Okay.
Um, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Steve Yost, seconded by Sean Henry. Roll call vote, please.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member, uh, Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.